Being called order now, roll call please.
Paul Kaufman.
Here.
Aaron Hallett.
Here.
Ashley Jones.
Here.
Billy King.
Here.
Kim York.
Here.
Ruth Johnson.
Here.
Bill O's absent.
You'll join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our mission statement is preparing each student for a successful and meaningful life. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Show moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion carries. Alright, recognitions.
Good evening, everyone. We are glad to recognize this evening several of our accomplished students in their many activities, and it's that time of year where we're having lots of contests and competitions, and our students always fare very well, and so we're honored to recognize some of them this evening. So as I call your name, please come forward and receive a certificate. First up, we have a state place in DECA, Maddie Welty placed fourth place in hospitality and tourism professional selling. She will be going to the international competition starting tomorrow, I believe, in Orlando, Florida. Maddie, congratulations. Is your suitcase packed?
Yeah.
Alright, that's good. She's ready to go. Alright, thank you for being here. We have several students this evening that we want to recognize from our journalism program. The state competition for journalism was put on by the Missouri Interscholastic Press Association at the University of Missouri Columbia, and the students were recognizing this evening placed in the top 1% in their categories across the state, and so they're recognized as all-state. First, we have Jennifer Aguilar for all-state photography sports reaction. Jennifer? We also have Madeline Young for photography sports action. Next is Kaylee Olson for photography sports action as well. We have Byron King for newspaper news magazine page design. And we have Bella Torres and Emma Snyder for their online feature package. Alright, gather up there and we'll take a photo. Ms. Russ is here this evening. She's taking photos as well. All good journalists are ready to take a photo at any time. Excellent job. Thank you. Alright, next up, we have some of our students from our speech and theater and debate program here. They recently had their state speech debate and theater tournament, and it was at the campus of Missouri State in April. We have several that are being recognized for various events. The first, we have Tevin Chavez Chavez for state champion in duet acting and also second place in dramatic interpretation. And his partner in duet acting is Alec Hariford. We also have a state champion in storytelling, Ella Schnacki. Finishing in third place in prose, Bailey Martin. And we have a fifth-place duo interpretation team of Gillian Humke and Larissa Ratney. Alright, I also want to recognize the group as a whole. We had several members, some of which are probably here with us, that finished second as a team in readers theater for their production of Animal Farm, so let's give them a round of applause as a group for that. And then, Mr. Schnacki is here. I'm going to ask him to come forward and be part of this photo. Every year, our kids do exceptionally well at this particular contest, and for the first time this year, they awarded an overall sweepstakes champion in speech and theater, and this is the first ever state champion as a team in speech, and it goes to our Raypack High School squad, so. And that's a nice big trophy that they're holding there for that overall sweepstakes champions. They have a whole trophy case full of championship trophies over at the high school. And I suspect some of them are probably going to go to practice for getting ready for the next performance. Thank you for being here. Congratulations. Great job. Alright, if I can find my piece of paper, I have one more recognition this evening. And we have an FBLA state leadership first-place finisher and impromptu speaking at the FBLA state leadership conference. This youngster is also qualified to go to Nationals in San Antonio in late June. Please come forward, Audrey Huffman.
I think one thing, thank you for being here. Thank you. One thing I'll just say collectively about this group of students is obviously they put a lot of time in above and beyond what their classes require. It takes commitment on their part, it takes the support of their families, and I thank you for being here this evening. They do such a great job representing Raypack, and we're very proud of them as everybody is throughout the school district. We invite you to stay if you'd like to, but at this point, you're welcome to leave if you'd like. We'll move on with our meeting. So thank you for being here this evening.
Well, and as they're leaving, I apologize, I forgot to mention in the beginning, we welcome Aaron Hallett to the board. We're excited to have him here at his first board meeting tonight. And apologize for my voice tonight. Allergies have got the best of me. Alright, moving along to consent agenda. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion passes. Public comment?
We don't have any tonight.
Okay. Moving on to action items. First one up is summer school application. Dr. Volker.
Good evening, everyone. This is my shortest presentation of the year because truly, this is just the formal part of the summer school process. We've already talked about summer school, all our courses that we're trying to offer. Students are currently enrolling now. We have over 1,200 students that have already enrolled, and that's not over yet, so we're excited about that. But this is the formal part of the process. You'll see that we submit this after your board approval. A thing that you might notice that is a little bit different over past years is when you look at Raymore Peculiar Senior High School, and you go over from the 750, which are totally just estimated enrollments. We'll have maybe more students than that this year. You'll see the open date of 6/3/2019 to 7/31/2019, because that is the change in our launch summer school online programming. So they can start taking launch courses starting on 6/3, and there are actually July offerings that we've never had July offerings in the past, and that's why you'll see that 7/31. So that is the scope of the entire summer school program, and we have many components within it. Other than that, I really think it's a pretty standard document. Does anybody have any questions before I ask for your approval?
Our number's pretty consistent where they're at at this point.
Yeah, they might be a little bit behind. I think the weather is, you know, going to impact a little bit. We're going to have that end-of-the-year push that always happens, so I hope to get back to where we were. We had a big number last year, so.
When do you guys close?
Well, that's a great question. We close at the end of April, but we still encourage those. We still have a round of recommendeds that we reach out to, encouraged even, that aren't recommended. So yes, April's our close, but we go into a little bit of May as well. And then, with our high school students that really, really believe they're going to pass that course, and I hope they do as well, that don't, we'll enroll them very late, I mean, into late May.
It's parents enrolling, right? They'll get on the online.
Yep, parents can do it all online. A lot of times at the high school level now, the students can actually get on there and select their courses as well. I had Luke looking at his course offerings, so. It's a lot to look at now. It's changed a lot in the last five to seven years.
Parents will get on there and see the high school dates and go, wow, that's two full months of summer.
Yeah, you do not have to do two. In fact, I would not do two months of summer school. That is just, you have a lot more opportunity. You can do two weeks, you can do four weeks, you can do two and four in June, you can do two and four in July, if you're willing to do online, so.
That'll explain whenever they go.
Yeah, they'll click into it. Basically, what parents will do on the high school portion is just say they are interested in online courses. Then the counselors will call down the kids and actually schedule what they need, because it can be very confusing for parents, a part of that process. We really just want them to say, I'm interested in my child taking online courses, and then they can work with the counselor to find out when and what's most appropriate.
And we are continuing to promote it, summer school in general through our Friday E-News. It'll be included for the next week or two at least, reminding them.
What's the maximum amount of credits that a student, a high school student could attain now that the launch program is available?
Well, we still only want them to obtain, to take two courses, one full credit. And that is a little bit confusing. I've had some parents coming to me and say, well, I'd like to take six, like my child, not them, I hope, I'd like my child to take six courses or four courses. At some point in time, academically, that's just not appropriate. I mean, if you're going to take that, that's like taking three full classes for an entire year. That is not, you know, reasonable, even in the scope within the summer.
We've kept it consistent with what we've done in the past. It's just an online option. We can reevaluate that after we get through it.
Yeah, I think we probably will reevaluate the possibility of on a case-by-case basis, looking at some extension, but at this point in time, I'm still taking it case-by-case. I have a parent I'm going to contact. You know, if you've struggled historically in the past trying to make up four to five courses in the summer, it's just really, I would advise against that.
Are counselors having good conversations with kids and saying, you would be better suited for it in the classroom setting rather than an online program?
Yeah, I think this is offering some of the opportunity to have those conversations. We are now beginning to see some of our current online students, and we're building that profile of what does a successful online student do and look like, and what is an online student that is not successful and often believes that online learning might be easier because it is truly not. So we are working on that as well. That'll be, that'll be an ongoing process. This is still fairly new for almost all involved.
Alright, do I have a motion?
I move that we approve the 2019 summer school application as presented by Dr. Volker.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes.
Thank you very much.
Now we're on to the 2019-20 salary schedules. Dr. Hatfield and Dr. Petten Gill.
Well, good evening. This is an exciting evening because it's the culmination of an entire year's work. Team Raypack is a voluntary committee where we have a lot of people that give a lot of their time. We have representatives from every department and every building. Ruth Johnson, our president, serves as the board representative on there and had perfect attendance this year. Thank you, Ruth, for all of your valuable input and time. Through that process, as you're very much aware, the budgeting process that, between Mrs. Bias and Dr. Monces, keeping the board updated as we're working through that process. Then Dr. Monces provides parameters to Team Raypack on what we have to work with. We put together a market comparison study where we fall with each job description in the district, and then that data was then digested by Team Raypack. They pull that together. We pull out of several different areas, strategies that they can use for, to improve our benefits package and salary. We then go through the different activities to determine prioritization of those activities. The board had a chance to see last month, kind of where we were, and then came back together finally and put together quite a list that I think I was very impressed with the way the team is able to think outside themselves. It may be a teacher, but yet they're willing to really vote and speak to our support staff, support staff supporting the teaching staff, and looking at that data. So it was a great process, so I would like to walk you through just quickly the bullets that came out of that list and the recommendations. Then I'll turn it over to Dr. Hatfield to actually show you how that looks when it, when the paper, when it gets to paper. First and foremost, the number-one priority of Team Raypack was to see that all employees get their step. Our hope is, and I think Dr. Monces has made clear several times, he has no desire to ever be in a position where he has to freeze salaries. We want to make sure we're fiscally sound. So that was the first step, that making sure everybody gets their step, both horizontally for increased education and then longevity as well. Exciting year. One of the reasons the team was able to have a little bit more revenue to play with is we had a 0% increase for our health insurance, the EAP and the health, you know, the life insurance. Then, exciting things beyond the steps. We were able to come out of that work with a $1,300 increase to the teacher salaries to the base, and then an equivalent overall percentage to the support staff, the administrative professional support staff, and the extra-duty schedules. We also then, based on the data, were able to look and see that our master's teachers, there was a bigger gap between them and their peers in the Kansas City metro than any other area, so there was an additional $500 given to teachers in those E-to-I columns in the master's range. We had several teachers that were bottomed out in their category or in their column. However, our strategic plan that this really is focused on and supporting wants our teachers to get a master's degree, so we want to make sure we're rewarding that and not freezing them in a salary. So Team Raypack is recommending we add another step of availability on those columns. We wanted, one of the things that really was glaring in the study, which wasn't a surprise to anyone, was that our nurses are highly underpaid. They were the most glaring weakness in terms of the gap analysis. So moving them across on a column on the support professional allows them to have a 25% increase in their wages, and that helps catch them up. At the same time, that's for the registered nurses, and then we moved the LPNs over, reclassified them for an 8% additional increase. We reclassified several support class, support positions, which resulted in 4% increases in all of their wages. And again, that's in addition to their step, and that's in addition to the raise that was mentioned earlier. I'm going to list those quickly. Our cooks, our kitchen managers, our receptionists, our student monitors, our childcare assistants, our crossing guards, computer tech one, computer tech two, administrative assistants, human resources specialist, payroll specialist, benefits coordinator, finance specialist, accompanist, district bookkeeper, and high school bookkeeper. All of those were found to be significantly lagging to their peers, and so all of those were, came out of Team Raypack with a recommendation to reclassify their position to a different column to allow them a raise. And then finally, not just looking at the gap analysis, but listening to our representation, the entire feeling we got, our feedback we got, was that both of our teaching assistants and our focus room facilitators, the way we use them, that was one of those areas that's hard to compare with other districts because that term may mean something in those districts differently than what, the way we use them. And so it came out that we wanted to reclassify them, which we were able to give them an additional 8% increase. With that being said, I'll let Dr. Hatfield share what these recommendations look like when the schedules are adjusted.
Well, I'm just going to jump in here real quick while you're switching. Team Raypack did a fabulous job of really looking at every position and trying to balance everybody. You know, we've talked on the board a lot about the focus room facilitators and all the hard work they do every day, and the teachers and everyone else saw that, and they really wanted to address that issue so that we can keep good people in those positions because they realize what a hard job they have and how much they do to help their job. So it was nice to see everybody work together, and they wanted everybody to be equal, not equal, but everybody to be represented in the increases.
So Dr. Petten Gill gave you a very detailed look at what Team Raypack did, and in the next memo, it just kind of summarizes that for you, divided by each of the salary schedule types. So I'm not going to read each of these items to you, but just some overall high points. The certified salary schedule overall is showing an average annual salary increase of 5.6%, which includes those lateral movements that we have staff when they move from one education level to another. So all the different increases average out to 5.6% for our staff. The support salary schedule, in addition to the base, there were the changes that he mentioned to the job titles. That ends up being an average of a 6.6% increase. And remember, when we're talking averages, that doesn't mean everyone gets that exact percent. Some are above, some are below, but that's where the average comes out. Administrative and support professional schedule, the overall average increase to that schedule was five, or will be, 5.54%. And then there's the equivalent changes to the extra duty. Several years ago, we went from just having stagnant extra-duty stipends to putting them on a schedule so that each year, there's a step given there. And it's also tied to the base salary schedule for teachers so that as that increases, the percentage for those extra-duty positions increases as well. We're also, and I'm very thankful for the recommendation, to increase the years of experience that we are acknowledging for certified staff coming into the district. We currently acknowledge 15 years. Many school districts acknowledge 20-plus, some even acknowledge all of their years of experience. As we continue to compete for the best teachers, increasing that one year at a time so that it doesn't bypass current staff that maybe have recently been hired, but that is, I'm very thankful for that. And likewise, we're increasing the amount of experience that we are recognizing on our support staff's salary schedule as well. So in a nutshell, thanks to Team Raypack and your work over the last two years, we're looking at an approximately 11% average increase to our teacher salary schedule and a 12.5% or a little bit more to our support staff's schedule. So exciting times. When we have those 0% insurance increases, it's a lot more fun to talk about salary schedules. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have about the specific schedules that are included.
Well, also, thank you to Proposition RP last year. That really allowed us to do a lot of these things. So thank you to the voters.
Sorry, I thought I meant to say that just then. Sorry.
And then just as a reminder, these increases that we're seeing are to help get us in line with other districts in our area, and this helps get us up. We're still middle, middle-top.
It not only helps us recruit new staff, but it helps us retain the quality staff that we have.
Yeah, we did a lot of study and analysis over the last two or three years to see where we're at, and that was part of that strategic planning process that ultimately led to Proposition RP. And I think people understood, well, we were struggling with some of our staff retention, and the investment the community has made is really going to make a difference long-term for us because we are all about the people who work here with our students on an everyday basis. And so this is going to help them tremendously over time. Great work by the committee, I think, to help prioritize that. Dr. Petten Gill's assistant, Casey, did a tremendous amount of work pulling data from districts across the metro to help work with that study, so we thank her for her efforts in that as well.
Alright, do I have a motion?
I move to approve the 2019-20 salary schedules as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Moving along to Stonegate and Shoal's playground surface. Dr. Petten Gill.
Very good. The district sought and received sealed bids for the playground surfaces at Stonegate Elementary for our new playground going in there. And the Shoal Early Learning Childhood Center, we have a, I just lost the word, but we have a small area up above the playground area that is just mulch, and that mulch is running down onto the turf, and it's a mess. So we added that in there to get that picked up as well. We ended up with four vendors. Bids were calculated, and Brock Turf is the low bidder. Be happy to answer any questions.
Why do you think they're so significantly low compared to the other?
Brock Turf?
Was there, I mean, that just seemed, seems fairly low.
He was a little bit low. It's a newer company that's kind of went out on their own. They've also, he also came out, I believe he got the Raytown Playgrounds as well. To be totally truthful, they looked, there was a concept drawing of just the equipment that was included as part of the spec package, and the estimator looked at that and may have looked at the wrong numbers, came back, said, hey, when Scott Dobson actually calls all of our winning vendors and just makes sure we're on the up and up, and he actually said, well, I actually looked at the smaller drawing. It would be this much of an up charge if I did it as per the full specs. Well, after we've already bid it, that's not, that's not possible. I did give him the opportunity to withdraw his bid, since there was, you know, unfortunately, a misunderstanding there. He said, no, he would rather do it at the submitted bid, so he's going to do it at that price. Because he's excited about getting in with Team Ray, or excuse me, with Raymore Peculiar. As he knows, we have multiple playgrounds. We're on a rotation now, and so wants to be partnered with us.
Sometimes to do a job for no profit is better.
Right.
Do I have a motion?
I move to approve the bid from Brock Turf to provide material and installation of playground surfaces at Stonegate Elementary in the amount of $33,784.91, and the Shoal Early Learning Center in the amount of $7,014.81, plus a 5% contingency for any unforeseen construction conditions.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes. Dr. Petten Gill, Timber Creek Carpet.
Very good. We sought and received sealed bids for the classroom carpet replacement at Timber Creek Elementary. As you may recall, we did the hallways last year. This year, we'll be doing all the classrooms. It's quite a job, as there's a lot of VCT that we'll have to pull up, and it's all that, all that carpet is glued down, you know, commercial level and it's been there for 22 years, so it'll all have to be machine-pulled and then replaced. So BR Carpet Company was actually our sole bidder in this, on this particular one, submitting a bid of $160,526.39.
We've struggled with getting carpet bidders for years, and we're not sure why. We keep trying everything we can, and I know Scott was talking to other vendors as well.
We actually did three site tours, including BR, with different companies that were very, seemed very interested and passionate about it and had lots of great questions. And then on come bid day, we had one bid, which, this is a solid company that we are comfortable working with, so.
Was the bid in line with expectations for the project?
Our estimates that we had put together, it was about $14,000 higher than our original estimates on $160,000.
Is there a motion?
I move to approve the bid from BNR Carpet Company to replace the classroom carpet at Timber Creek Elementary with a bid total of $160,526.39, plus a contingency of 5% for any unforeseen construction condition.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes. Gym painting.
Okay, last one for tonight. We're excited about the way the bids came in on this. We sought and received sealed bids for painting of the main gyms at both the high school and the south middle school, along with the alt. We did an alternative bid because we didn't know if it would fall within the budget for the auxiliary gym at the high school. We had four vendors submit bids with the low bids submitted by CertaPro Painters for a total of $28,200. That does not include the paint. The district provides the paint on that. that.
Is it that way on all of them? Do I have a motion?
I move to approve the bid from CertaPro to provide the labor for painting the main gyms at Ray Peck High School and Ray Peck Middle School, along with the auxiliary gym at Ray Peck High School for a total amount of $28,200, plus a contingency of 5% for any unforeseen construction conditions.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Moving along to cable upgrade. They said you can't throw a board member off.
Good evening. Tonight, I'm presenting five bids directly related to our five-year technology plan and presented to the board as part of a planned technology expenditures during the March 14th work session. The first three bids that I'll present are covered under federal E-Rate guidelines. And I'm going to quickly review those in case you guys didn't read up on that before you came to the meeting tonight. E-Rate is a program that provides discounts to assist schools and libraries in the United States to obtain affordable internet access with a focus on delivering internet to the classroom. Discounts for support depend on level of poverty and the urban rural status of the population served and range from 20% to 90% of the cost of eligible services. So our school district, typically, we estimate that we're going to receive about a 50% reimbursement for the first three items that I'm going to present to you tonight. So I'm giving you the full price, and sometime within the year, the federal government will send us a check for half that amount back. So it's, we've done it for several years. E-Rate's, it's not new, and it's, they've never not paid us. So that's, that's good. So we'll start with the cable upgrade. And as the district's infrastructure improves, upgrades need to be made at the cabling and wiring within buildings to support the routing and data traffic. Raymore and Peculiar Elementary are two of our oldest buildings, and were initially cabled for data in 1997. The cabling upgrade will address some existing performance issues and continue to enhance our wireless performance. And it will help us as we add more and more devices in that building, as we know we're continuing to do. So a request for proposals process was conducted by the district, and we used the E-Rate process and made, made the bid available to vendors across the country via the USAC web portal. So it's a little bit different than just putting it out on ours. This is a, it goes out nationwide. Everybody can see it through this web portal. So E-Rate proposals were received from four vendors. And tonight, we're asking you to accept the low bid and approve the partner of YellowDog to upgrade cabling at Raymore and Peculiar Elementaries for $43,812.15. I'd be happy to answer any questions if anybody has any.
Again, there's pretty wide discrepancy there. I mean, more than twice as much for a couple of them.
Yeah.
Is there anything we're not getting, or?
I mean, cables, pretty much cable. I would say a lot of that is where they're cutting labor costs. So some of those vendors may have chosen to take advantage of kind of the new rules and regulations that we talked about here, where jobs under $75,000 don't necessarily have to pay prevailing wage. I'm not 100% sure about that. I'm just looking, they're just sending me their bottom line number. So anything, I would be telling you is kind of a guess. We've worked with YellowDog in the past on several different projects. They've always been really reliable. And I trust the people there that, that do the work. This will be the first time we've ever had them cable a building, though. But we've worked on them on bigger projects than, than this, so.
And each of the bids have bid specifications that are very detailed, correct, that they're bidding on?
Oh, yes, yes.
And so they're required to follow the bid specs.
So not, yeah, not only do they have a detailed bid, but we also had a walk-through of both buildings. So all these people brought representatives to the buildings, and we did a walk-through, walked through the classrooms, what it looks like. Like to keep it pretty standard in every building, as far as height, where the drops are going to be located and things like that. So a lot of it's going to be ripping out the old, which they're taking care of, disposing of that, and then putting the new back in pretty close to where it's at right now.
Going from the board level, the E-Rate program is something we love or discuss with our federal legislators a lot to promote this. And when Congresswoman Hartzler was just here about a month or so ago, we reiterated to her that we appreciated her support on that program because of things like this that we're able to get the help with.
I'm just curious, do we not need the 5% contingency for this one like we do on the other ones?
I'm, no. I mean, we did it by the amount of drops. So we know exactly how many drops we have in the building. And so their footage of cable is, that's, that's kind of their problem, not ours. We just got to have the drops where they're supposed to be.
If you say I have X amount of drops, that's, that's it.
Do I have a motion?
I'm moved to approve the new structured cabling bid for $43,812.15 from YellowDog as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes. Network infrastructure.
Okay, the building block to the district's technology is the core network. As part of improving student and teacher access of increasingly rich digital content and access district servers, the network switches within all schools need to be upgraded and upkeep needs to be kept on all those. These are, this is equipment that's on 24/7, 365 days a year. We don't ever turn it off. So you get into the five, six-year life cycle of something like that, you start to get concerned that things are going to go bad. And when something goes bad with these, with this type of equipment in the middle of the day, it means entire buildings lose connectivity and lose phones, lose copiers, lose wireless internet, pretty much lose things that make the day, make the day happen. So overall, we will be upgrading the switches, so it will improve our network performance. And this is the same kind of deal. We did an RFP process. We use the E-Rate process. We posted on the USAC web portal. And for this one, we only received two vendors. So I'm going to just go ahead and take Paul's question before he asks it because there's a gigantic difference in price there. So you're looking at two things. One, we have Cisco networking throughout the district. So all of our closets have Cisco equipment in it. YellowDog was proposing that we totally scrap Cisco and bring in HP equipment. And so totally change what we were doing. So basically rip and replace everything. And so when we buy Cisco equipment, as we're proposing to do here, we do all the installation work, we do all the programming work, we absorb that all in-house. If we were to change to a different platform, we don't know that platform. So quite honestly, that's, there's probably over $100,000 just in labor of installation and programming in, as part of that $869,000, beyond, above and beyond the, the equipment side of it. So that, that's where you're seeing the majority of that cost. The other piece of it is, the top bid, we're not replacing edge, edge switches, which would mean, so at the core of a building, maybe you got kind of the heart, heartbeat, which is the big, the big switch in the middle of the building. And outside, there's, there's closets that feed classrooms that are maybe like elbows or arms or something that, that go out to it. We're not replacing these, we're just replacing the main core switches inside the buildings. So we're not replacing all of the equipment, but we're replacing the, the key component in each location. So.
One question. Long, long-term, will Cisco still be applicable to what we're doing?
Cisco's pretty solid.
Yeah. Cisco would, is, yeah, they're big.
Okay.
They're, 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 they're big in the networking industry. So, yeah. So once we evaluated final prices, prices for items that we requested in the RFP, we kind of reevaluated some of our opportunities. And that's where we talked about, maybe we didn't do all the edge switches. We took a lot of that stuff off and pared down what we were going to do, just so we could make sure that we got, we got everything on the budget target that, and where we needed to be numbers-wise for E-Rate and also for my budget, too. So it's recommended that the district approve the purchase of Cisco networking switching components from Converge One. Cisco is the district standard and is an industry-leading provider of enterprise-quality switching components. Implementation, we plan to begin in June, and hopefully we will have the entire project completed by the end of July. And this is approved. These upgrades will benefit every building and every classroom in the entire district. So we're pretty excited about it. So we're asking for your approval to purchase Cisco networking equipment from Converge One for $264,783.50. Be happy to answer any other questions.
What's your expected downtime?
We're expecting zero impact on students, maybe minimal impact on principals, depending on if they're just coming in to work. They should be, they should be gone for the summer whenever we're doing, when the buildings are going down. We'll work around summer school. We've already got that kind of all scheduled out and everything. So, and, and for what we're doing here, we can do the majority of our programming beforehand, and then we just roll in there. And it's basically, yeah, swapping it out and racking it, stacking it, and then programming it. So it won't take, we're estimating a day or two to do the whole swap out, so.
Do I have a motion?
I move to approve the purchase of Cisco infrastructure equipment for $264,783.50 from Converge One.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes. Dr. Gooding.
I like that. Thank you. So the final, the final E-Rate eligible purchase that I'll be presenting tonight is for wireless network equipment. Currently, our department manages three legacy network systems. And so currently, we have Arrow Hive, we have Maraki, we have Cisco. So we have three separate systems that we're monitoring, managing, and provide, using to provide access for students in the district. So with increased usage of wireless devices and wireless traffic, we believe that a new wireless network system is needed to unify our system. And on top of that, upgrade it so we can deliver the digital content to our students and staff quicker and, and better, basically. So we did the RFP process for this as well. It's kind of redundant, but we used the USAC web portal for this, and we received proposals from three separate vendors. This one was a little bit different because wireless can be really finicky. So we wanted to make sure that what we decided to spend our money on here, we were really happy with, and we knew actually worked on our network the best. So we got equipment from each one of the vendors, their proposed devices. We brought them on our network, and we went through an extensive on-campus proof-of-concept demonstration to replicate each proposed unit's performance under stress on our network. So in English, what that means is, we went over to the academy library, set up a, one of, set up each individual AP. So start with the Arrow Hive one or whatever, set that AP up.
Access point.
Access point, sorry. We set at the access point and started adding devices to it. So we started with 20 Chromebooks, streaming YouTube, every single one of them streaming YouTube. And then we just started adding MacBooks, iPads, Chromebooks, until basically the AP melted, it called melted, but stopped working and started kicking people, started kicking people off the network. So we did that for all of our, all, all the access points. Each one, we tested them. And, I mean, we were very happy to see that Aruba, actually the cheapest one, actually performed the best. We also went and did background research on it as well because every single one of these companies will give you literature and documentation that says mine's better than theirs, and here's proof. So we went to some independent researchers and looked at their data as well, and their data matched pretty closely to what we were seeing, too. So we felt really, really confident about it. We'll tell you one, one, one thing about this. This is not moving, none, none of these, I did not spec this out, would be moving our wireless network to the absolute latest wireless technology, which would, should be like 802.1X. So if you have people asking why we didn't do that, if you get that question, the answer to that would be, right now, there's no devices that even support that, that are out there. They're twice as expensive as what we're paying for this. And we don't plan to pay more for devices to get, you know, a YouTube video to load a half a second faster. We can, we can wait one second in the district for that, for that to happen. So this isn't the, this is definitely not like, you know, the Cadillac of access points that we're talking about, but it's a very strong, well-documented device that's, that's used by school districts, colleges, all across the nation. So tonight, we're asking for your approval to purchase Aruba Wireless Network Licensing Service and Equipment from YellowDog for $259,864.30. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
So is this currently something we don't have?
So that is with those right there. So we would be replaced. So we have one of those in every classroom, every common space, football fields, anywhere students could be having class, we have an access point. And that's what handles and manages all the wireless traffic within, within the room. So we have about 740 of those across the district. So that's another, another challenge for my department this summer is on, that's another job that we'll be doing in every single class. So we'll be visiting every single classroom across the district to take care of that also. This doesn't include labor to hang and install, I guess is what I'm telling you.
This is just purchasing?
Just purchasing, yeah.
And then you guys will.
Yeah. So one, one of the, one I didn't really talk about, but part of the cabling bid, the YellowDog actually put in their cabling bid that they would hang APs back up, which I didn't spec, I didn't ask for. So that was nice. So they're going to, I went ahead and held them to that and said, you guys get to do that also. So that's, that's nice. Two buildings, we won't have to.
So in their bid, they're going to, once they recable, they'll put the AP back up, is what you're saying?
We'll have to, well, if this gets approved.
If that gets approved, they'll have the AP ready. So when they recable, they can put up the new one for you.
Yes. Yes, that's the, that's what we're going for. At least for those two schools.
For two schools, yeah.
Do I have a motion?
I move to approve the purchase of Aruba Wireless Network Licensing Service and Equipment for $259,864.30 from YellowDog.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion?
I just want to thank you for all the work on all the testing and the thoroughness of the plan.
Thank you. He doesn't want the phone calls that come with not working, so.
All right. Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes. Mr. Gooding.
All right. So now we're moving on to non-E-Rate eligible bids and RFPs. These are bids that were our, in, in our budget, bids that were part of the presentation in the work session in March. So it's not new expenditures, but they aren't E-Rate eligible. So these are full price. So as we continue to incorporate technology into classrooms across the districts, it's important to give teachers and students the tools they need for effective integration. The five-year technology plan presented to the board seems like just yesterday, but actually, it was in April of 2015, included laptops for teachers. And this purchase will finally complete that five-year plan and will complete the teacher rollout. So it doesn't seem possible, but it actually will happen. So this will be every teacher, every certified staff member in the district, every certified full-time staff member in the district will have a laptop at the end of this. The iPads that are on here will be used to support the Project Lead the Way Launch Program at, at every elementary school. So in 2019, we requested quotes for these two Apple products to be used in classrooms. Prices were requested for the MacBook Air and for iPads. The district selected vendor is Apple. Apple's considered a sole-source provider, which is a little bit different than the rest of the things that we've done here tonight. But a sole-source provider just means no one else is able to sell Apple products to schools other than Apple. So if you work with another vendor that sells new, new Apple products, and they sell it to a school district, they're violating their, their agreement with Apple. They can't do that. So, and Apple is very engaged in these RFP processes, I, I can guarantee you. So tonight, we're asking for your, for you to approve the purchase of MacBook Air computers for certified staff and iPads for elementary students from Apple Computer for $114,240.
Brian, a point of clarification real quick. I just noticed the recommendation has 140 computers and 90 iPads, and in the bid tally below, it's switched from that.
Oh.
Which one is, which one is correct?
It's 100, it's 140 iPads and 90 MacBook Airs.
So the number is correct at the bottom.
Yes.
It was just switched in the motion. So the motion would be 90 MacBook Air computers and 140 iPads, right?
140 iPads, 90 MacBook Airs. Yes, I apologize for that.
Total dollar figures are correct.
Yes, dollar figures are correct.
Do I have a motion?
I move to approve the purchase of 140 iPads.
Yep. He said iPads.
140 iPads and 90 MacBook Air computers from the Apple Computer Company for $114,240.15.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion or questions? All in favor? Motion passes. Moving along to desktop computer.
All right. All right, finally, this will be my last one tonight. In April of two thousand and nineteen, the district requested quotes for a hundred and seventy desktop computers and a hundred and thirty monitors to replace aging devices and to maintain our replacement cycle for hardware also presented to the board in two thousand and fifteen. We received proposals from twelve vendors and, and included prices for Dell or an equivalent desktop and monitors. Vendors were asked to give a unit and warranty price per unit. And once final prices were received, my staff and I, we reevaluated some different opportunities we had to adjust configurations within buildings to maybe maximize the impact while containing the costs to stay within the project's budget. So what I'm saying there in a very nice way is everything came in over budget, so we reevaluated and moved things around so that we could get back, back under budget. So the purchase includes a hundred and eleven desktop computers and ninety-five monitors to be used at the academy, Stonegate, and ASC. These computers are directly going to impact students and teachers and upgraded machines are needed in order to provide hardware for classroom curriculum and instruction. And I've, I've talked with you guys a little bit about the age of our desktop computers in our schools. The, the ones we replace are typically seven to nine years old, so we've definitely got our money out of what we're replacing. This purchase will be what I, what I plan to be the last major purchase of desktop computers that we will, will make as a district. So again, this is the end of the five-year plan. This is the last year of those five years, so this will be the complete recycle of all those computers and buildings. And now we're going to transition into teacher mobility, teachers using those laptops, being comfortable using the laptops in the classroom as their main device and presentation device for students. Be happy to answer. Did I, I don't think I asked for the money yet, did I? Let me do that. So tonight, we're asking for you to approve the purchase of a hundred and eleven desktop computers and ninety-five monitors from Dell Computer Company for sixty-nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-four dollars. And I'd be happy to answer any questions about that also.
So this fall, this next fall, will we re-establish a new five-year technology plan?
So, yeah, so glad you asked me that. So Brian and I have already been working to assemble a team to start our next five-year plan, so next year will, will be the last year of our last five-year plan, so we'll, we'll begin, we'll begin planning for that. We've already kind of tentatively set meeting dates, have a committee we feel pretty comfortable with already formed. We need one more member, which would be a board member, so we need to figure that out, who we can get put on the technology committee.
What are you talking about?
So, yes, yes, we are, we are planning to, to have something to present to the board next year. I think last time we did it, we presented it maybe at, maybe March or something like, I don't know. Dr. Monsis will be able to, he'll put it in the right place, I'm sure.
Do we have a motion?
I move to approve the purchase of a hundred and eleven, a hundred and eleven desktop computers and ninety-five monitors from Dell Computer Company for sixty-nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-four dollars.
Do I have a second? Any other discussion? All in favor? Motion passes.
Thank you.
And no, we didn't add you to the motion. All right, moving along to committee reports. I was at Team Raypack and we kind of touched on it earlier, they did a lot of work this year. Those teachers and staff members that are on that committee put a lot of time into that this year, reevaluating everything. So thank you to all those teachers and staff who put all that hard work into that this
April Wellness Committee meeting was canceled just because of all the activities going on toward the end of school, but we will reconvene in May for another committee meeting there.
We have over four hundred employees participating in the walk challenge right now, step challenge, excuse me.
All right, Superintendent's report.
A few items I'd like to share with everybody this evening. First of all, the first full week of May is always Teacher Appreciation Week, and so we're going to be celebrating that May sixth through tenth, and so we'll be having activities for staff members throughout the district. I encourage our parents and patrons to send another thanks to all the, the staff members for all they do to support the students. I know sometimes that job is thankless at times, but we want to make sure we recognize their efforts now and throughout the year. Also want to congratulate all the nominees for PTA Volunteer of the Year. That little gathering to award that or announce that is next Tuesday evening right here in this room, so I think it's at five-thirty if I remember correctly. So if you'd like to come, I'm sure you'd be welcome to be here. Want to thank the Optimus Club, Mr. O'Neal's here. He helps organize our annual Academic Excellence Banquet. We rec, they recognize students in the district. I looked at the list of projects that they do throughout the year and there's twenty-five to thirty of them that support kids in our district in one way or another, so the banquet is just one of those events. Another great partner that we have is the foundation. They have recently held that Teacher of the Year and Support Staff Employee of the Year banquets. So congratulations to Jennifer Vaca and Corey Posey as our Employees of the Year. They obviously do a great job. It's a great evening to celebrate staff and hear great stories about all the things that they do for kids in the district. Tomorrow night is Raymore Day in the K, so we have another partnership with the Raymore Chamber. Right now, at this point, they've sold nearly a thousand tickets for the evening, and I know we have a lot of staff members going outside of the chamber ticket process because it's Teacher Appreciation Night at the same time. So they can buy a special ticket package and get a hat and a whole nine yards. So we have our sixth-grade choir kids singing the anthem Friday night, tomorrow night, and we have one of our Bridle Ridge students throwing out the first pitch, so kind of an exciting evening. You know, tonight we celebrated a lot of our student activities. We've got a whole nother list of them we're going to bring to you again next month. It's heavily activity time for all the different co-curricular and extracurricular groups and our teams continue to do well, so we're always excited to bring more to you for recognition and we'll have several next month. We're getting to the point now where we're getting closer to the end of the school year, so we've got about a month to go. We look forward to celebrating graduation on May seventeenth, so I know families are preparing for that and kids are working hard, getting ready for state assessments that I believe start next week and finals are not too far along after that. So it's kind of a push to the end at this point and I thank everybody for their efforts. Appreciate it.
All right, Board of Education comments. A couple of weeks ago, we had our second of three meetings with our legislators here in Cass County, with our Cass County Kids First, and we had four of our six legislators there and we had really good discussions with them that day. And they're finalizing budgets this week, so we'll see what the next couple of weeks brings. And then we also were able to meet with Congresswoman Hartzler since then as well. She came in and met with some administrators and some board members and we got a chance to have some good conversation with her. I had an MSBA board retreat last weekend that was supposed to have been in January. Last night, some of us got to help judge at the senior drive projects. Phenomenal work that our students do every day and it's nice to see all that culminate into their projects and you can just see them take a deep breath when they're all done because you can tell that they were a little stressed over last night's presentations, but they did a really good job. And thank you to all of our staff that puts in the hard work to put that whole presentation on. And then, a couple of us went on site visits a couple of weeks ago to the high school and the academy and it was fun to walk through the, the classrooms in the building and we went into a couple that I don't think any of us understood a word that was going on. Different languages, but you know, it was nice to see, you know, what we do here actually happening in the classrooms. So it was nice to go through there and see all of that. Anybody else? And we let Paul in the classroom and he stirred them all up. All right, moving on to calendar of events. We've got May second is our MSBA Region Four meeting at Belton next week. May seventeenth, graduation at seven PM at Community of Christ Auditorium. May twenty-third is our next regular board meeting at six PM and for closed and seven PM for open. May thirty-first is our last day of school and June fifth, summer school begins.
When is teacher retirement?
May seventh.
May seventh, okay.
And if there's nothing else, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you.